Did you order E P S for that one or did you decide? And then do you have like?
That's the nicest.
Really animated. How's it going?
I already didn't press.
I guess I never learned that word in high school. That was terribly nice.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the planning commission on Tuesday, June tenth. The meeting's called a quarter. We'll ask if we could take roll call, please.
Certainly Commissioner Haveman.
Here.
Commissioner Prevotelli. Commissioner Summers.
Here.
Commissioner Kent.
Here.
Commissioner Rodby and Commissioner Sade, how are excuse this evening and Chair Makado.
President.
We do have a quorum tonight.
Okay, now for the order of the agenda. Are there any commissioners that would like to request changes to the order of the agenda? Nope. Next, we'll move to the meeting procedures. City of San Rafael remains committed to for all to participate in our public meetings. I want to welcome all that are here making the time to this evening to participate. Margaret, if you could please tell how public comment will work.
Certainly Chair. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and streamed live on YouTube. Viewers can also watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda or by dialing six, six, nine, four, 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 nine, one, seven, one, and entering the meeting ID eight, three, six, five, one, zero, four, nine, zero, three, four, pound. We offer closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable the feature. And if you do experience any difficulties, please email me as the planning manager, which is the easiest way to find my email, but margaret dot Kavanaugh hyphen Lynch, very long, at the city of San Rafael dot org. In order to provide oral testimony, speakers must be present. Displayed on the podium is a timer to help you stay within your allotted timeframe. You are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if you reside from outside the city. If you'd like to request accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act to provide public comment virtually, please submit your request to the planning manager's office within seventy-two hours before, at least seventy-two hours before the meeting. And again, that's my email once again. That's that's the many ways that people can participate, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, next oral communications from the public. Next on the agenda are oral communications from the public. Remarks on non-agenda items are welcome at this time within the subject jurisdiction of the planning commission. Please know that remarks on the agenda will be heard at the time when the item is discussed. So you mean you're here for the item? Thank you. Hey consent calendar. There's one item that's a consent calendar for our commission minutes of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have any edits on the minutes? If negatory, then take a motion in a second.
Move to approve as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Summers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Chair Makado?
Yes.
Motion passes with three abstentions due to absence.
Great, so next move to our action items. The action item for this evening is nine thirty Del Presidio Boulevard. It's a request for an environmental design review to demolish an existing twenty-two-hundred-square-foot convenience store and gas station to allow for the construction of a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot convenience store and gas station. We'll ask for staff report, please.
I'd like to introduce our principal planner, Jose Herrera Preza. He will be providing an overview of tonight's report.
Good evening Commissioners. My name's Jose Herrera Preza with the City of San Rafael Planning Department. The item before the commission is an application for an environmental and design review at nine thirty Del Presidio Boulevard. Staff has presented a quick presentations for the commission's review. Next slide, please. The project site is a twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot parcel zone commercial office. The site is located at the southeast corner of the Del Presidio Las Gaienas Avenue intersection in the Terre Linda neighborhood. The site is currently occupied by twenty-four-seven brand gas station, mini mart and auto bay. The site is adjacent to commercial uses such as gas stations and commercial offices. The site is also directly across the street from the North Gate Shopping Center. This is a view as presented by the applicant from Del Presidio Boulevard. The existing conditions of the site. The project consists of the demolition of an existing one-story twenty-two-hundred-square-foot gas station, convenience store, and associated site improvements such as parking lot and landscape. The proposed project will allow for the construction of a one-story structure with a maximum height of twenty-one feet, a total of twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot of usable space to be used as gas station, convenience store, and a automobile repair bay. It will include seventeen off-street parking spaces and associated site improvements, such as the reduction in driveways, curb cuts, and increased landscaping. The proposed site plan shows the structure sited along the northern rear property line. The location of the proposed building allows for the reconfiguration of the site, which will reduce the number of curb cuts, increase the amount of landscaping, incorporate additional off-street parking spaces. The site plan specifically would reduce the number of curb cuts from four total to three serving the site. Will result in two curb cuts on Las Gaienas Avenue and one on Del Presidio Boulevard. The site will operate four gas pumps sheltered under a twenty-foot tall canopy. The new convenience store will have parking spaces in front of the building and located along the side. These are the proposed elevations. The proposed elevations include several forms of physical building articulation, which provides some visual interest and will reduce the perceived bulk. The primary entrance, which projects two feet out from the primary building facade, is framed by exterior metal panels, which create a visual focal point. The variation in parapet heights along the roof range from seventeen feet to twenty-one feet. It creates a hierarchy of visual forms and interest from the right-of-way. The storefront facade proposes a ten-foot aluminum storefront system with transom-style elements in a contemporary architectural style. The building will also have a variation of exterior materials, such as a Belgian board horizontally applied above the aluminum storefront, metal panels, and varying types of stucco. The proposed landscape plan has increased the amount of landscaping and has incorporated in the conditions of approval will comply with all the required landscaping performance standards. Now, the photometric plan shows the proposed lighting on the site. As incorporated in the conditions of approval, the lighting will comply with standards set forth in the lighting and glare chapters of the planning code. In closing, staff recommends the planning commission approve the application as presented, subject to the conditions of approval. Alternatively, the commission has the options to direct staff to approve the application with certain modifications, changes, or additional conditions of approval, or continue the application to allow the applicant to address any of the commission's comments or concerns, or deny the project and direct staff to return with a revised resolution. This concludes staff's presentation.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Do you have any questions for staff? Shoot.
So the sign program, as I understand from the staff report, is in part of our review. Will that come back at a later time or will that be a staff approval?
It's a good question. The, at this point, the applicant did not submit a full design application, design reapplication for sign program. But in the future, if the application does not comply with the applicable regulations, it would be subject to the review of the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. And my other question is, will the applicant be presenting the photometric plan tonight?
Yes, the applicant has prepared a presentation for the commission.
Okay, great, thank you.
A question about, you said the photometric plan has been reviewed and meets with city standards. Can you give me a little color on what the city standard is for lumens at the, or foot candles under the canopy? Because I've been through a few of these, just curious what our ordinance actually says.
Yes, good question, Commissioner Summers. The, the planning code is very specific in light and glare standards. Its specifics entail that the light and glare coming from the site is to be the minimum required illumination to be deemed, to deem the site secure.
Okay, thanks. Nope. Okay, thanks. All right, let's open up the public hearing component. If the applicant wants to come up, present.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Casey Held and I'm with Barghausen Consulting Engineers. I am civil engineer of record on this and I'm here presenting on behalf of the owner and developer of the site, Arash Salki, who's actually local, grew up in Marin and went to Terre Linda High School, so knows the area well here. Thank you all Commissioners for your time here tonight to review our project. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. We have a very short, simple presentation as well that I want to go over and I do want to highlight a couple of things. And thank you, Jose, as well for your presentation. All right, wonderful. Again, nine thirty Del Presidio Boulevard, San Rafael. As Jose mentioned, existing convenience store, fuel station, there is three smog bays on the site today, five M P Ds as well. Next slide. Again, Jose kind of went through this as well, but we are doing a full raise and rebuild of the convenience store, canopy dispensers, as well of removal of the underground storage tanks. And we are putting in new fueling dispensers as well. So kind of highlighting just a little bit of the de-intensification of the site here. So the existing site, I guess I mentioned, five M P Ds, you know, which results in ten fueling positions. There is single wall underground storage tanks here and outdated equipment. So we are proposing to replace those single wall underground storage tanks with the typical double-wall tanks with associated piping, as well as the new dispensers associated with that. So all up to standard in terms of environmental requirements. And we are also reducing from the three, oh, excuse me, that's okay. And we're also reducing from the three smog bays down to the one. So again, just kind of de-intensifying the use there. And as a result, we are increasing the size of the convenience store, adding more typical offerings that you would see at a fueling station. So pretty straightforward project here, in line with the existing use permit. I think one thing we want to touch on as well that I don't know that Jose spoke to is we have been determined to be CEQA exempt. So we, you know, in line with the existing conditions, not anticipating a major significant impact based on the project. So we were, you know, not asked necessarily to go into substantial review of those CEQA-related items. But other than that, we are excited to present this to you, excited to meet the standards that the city has presented us with. And generally, no objections to the conditions of approval. I just did have a couple of comments I wanted to discuss here tonight related to the public works conditions. So one, I believe it's condition thirty, required full upgrades of sidewalk, curb, and gutter. The only thing I would like to say, and no objection to that whatsoever, is the curb ramp at the intersection does look like it was improved recently. So I just would like, you know, maybe a clarification to that comment that if determined to be compliant today, would not have to be replaced. And then in addition, I do think there's a condition that requires grind and overlay of the right-of-way out to the half width of the street. You know, that's a pretty substantial effort here. You know, the right-of-way through here is very busy road, so there's significant traffic control that have to be accounted for to be able to do a project of that nature. And looking at development in the surrounding areas, I believe that the Chevron has been redeveloped recently. I think it was twenty-two when that was done. Did not appear that they were subject to a similar requirement. So again, we're certainly open to discussions and want to meet the city's requirements and standards, but just looking to ensure, you know, that we're given a fair shot as well in regards to those kind of items. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Were the, both of this really quick, were both of those under condition thirty?
I believe, you know.
Yeah, right, A and B.
They were, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one. I've actually had my car smogged there a few times. I know there's cars that kind of line up and wait. But it looks like if cars queued up for this, that smog bay in this current design, it might actually interfere with some of your circulation.
Yeah, well, the nice thing is here too, the, with the de-intensification, you know, I, there is only an ability to serve one car at a time and that's intentional. You know, so we're not here to be a substantial server, you know, of the smog aspect here. And so there is, you know, one bay and it is part of the natural circulation of the site. So as a car enters likely from Las Gaienas Avenue, they would see that maybe that space is occupied and then be able to continue through the site. They would have access to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight additional stalls down the line. If those were occupied, then the reasonable approach would be to exit on Del Presidio Boulevard and either come back later or, you know, circle around if maybe that bay was open.
My point is historically, there are two or three cars waiting.
Thank you.
Just back to your one DPW comment was for grinding the road out to the center. Is that under the, I mean, is the intention there that the roadway is going to suffer from during the course of construction? I'm wondering the intention of that DPW comment. I don't know if staff can chime in? Or if you know?
At this thought, we do not know, we could always follow up with DPW for the intention of that comment and report back to the applicant or the commission if interested, a follow-up.
Yeah, I know some DPW departments, like in Corte Madera, for instance, they will have the applicant post a bond and then provide documentation of photographs and video evidence of pre-construction conditions and then post-construction conditions. And then if DPW deems that's not necessary, they get their bond back. So I mean, there could be a mechanism there that they're only required to do it if necessary.
Yeah, we certainly want to be a partner to whatever commission decides. It's not something we want to hold up approval of the project. Absolutely.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it could be a condition. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Actually, I don't think I touched on photometric.
Yeah, let's, I was just gonna say, let's, let's talk about the photometrics.
Yes, yes. Okay, so Jose did bring that to my attention today, so thank you for your comments. I'm not quite sure which commissioner brought that up. But we agree, I think there's probably some over-illumination happening under the canopy. And I think discussing with my architectural team, we're going to propose to cut the lighting in half. Now, in line with Jose's language in the code, it's about the, you know, necessary lighting per, per use. And fueling stations, canopies do typically have a higher illumination under the canopy for safety reasons. You know, at night, you want it to be highly lit, you know, you don't want concerns there whatsoever. And so another idea might be to look at and see what the photometric was for the recently approved Chevron down the road and ensure no, you know, higher illumination and something like that.
Yeah, doing my own research on it today, typically what's considered adequate for safety and at the pumps at night is twenty, which is actually a fifth of what you've shown on those plans. You guys are up at a hundred, but twenty seems to be the number. And from personal experience, I did a gas station right here in town. I mean, people, anybody can go look at it at night, it's at the corner of Kerner and Bellum Boulevard. Our photometrics under the canopy were sixteen point five and it's pretty bright.
Okay.
So a hundred or whatever you had on those plans was, you know, like sporting, sporting event bright. So I don't know if we could condition, certainly condition that you work with staff to, to provide illumination that's consistent with what else we've approved in town, I think is rational.
Yeah, my own research said it was more like ten to fifteen, so half isn't really close to where you need to be.
Certainly, and we want something that's reasonable. We're not, there's really no benefit for us to have this like extravagantly illuminated site. So I'm sure it's just a small oversight, so we're happy to.
And part of the problem there is too, is then you have spillover from the canopy too. So now you're getting twenty-seven, twenty-nine when you should be more down probably around, you know, eight or nine or ten.
Certainly.
Otherwise, on the positive front, it's a nice-looking project.
Thank you, we're excited to bring an upgraded aesthetic. I, you know, I think that there's improvement to circulation on the site by limiting the ability for cars to be hidden behind the building. You know, the reduction in use in some aspects here, so I certainly think there's a lot of positives. So I appreciate your commentary.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, so we open this now for the public comment. If there's anybody, a member of the public wants to come on up, feel free to come up. Otherwise, we'll just move on to deliberating. Okeydoke. So we'll close public comment, bring it back to the planning commission if we want to discuss this, please.
So I think the project looks pretty good as presented, except with two exceptions, one very minor and one you just heard about already. So I won't repeat that one. The lighting has to come way down, not fifty percent. And the only other one is you have four junipers on your planting plan. The fire department doesn't allow junipers on the two pyrophitic, so it's four plants. It shouldn't be too onerous to come up with a substitute for those. And those are my comments.
Thank you.
I concur.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay. Yeah, I agreed. Do you feel like the condition thirty B in particular? So there were two issues that you raised, one where the, sort of, that the, the pavement restoration is currently compliant or good enough? And were you looking for language?
Yeah, is this appropriate time to review this?
I think so.
Okay, so yeah, I'm, I'm thinking on thirty A, we would just say, let's see, unless deemed compliant, unless existing conditions are deemed compliant. So basically, I'm just trying to avoid having to replace a newly replaced curb ramp at the intersection.
Understood.
And then pavement restoration, I mean, certainly don't want to continue this, you know, have to have a continuance here. So I, maybe we do an interpretation of what Department of Public Works was looking for here. You know, and I don't know, Jose, if you have additional commentary, but if it is strictly a representation of ensuring the conditions today remain, I certainly think we could have photo documentation. I know there's a construction management plan condition, we could add that photo documentation to that report and then have before and after, you know, after construction's complete. And then the, the challenge would be Department of Public Works would have to make a determination after construction if replacement would have to happen, which means remobilization, et cetera. So I'm, I'm open to ideas. Obviously, I think we're just trying to, you know, ensure that the scope of work asked of us, you know, matches the scope of work of the project and, you know, consistent with development around us.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question to the Chair of Staff. Since I came from Design Review Board and not Commission, this is now a resolution that we're approving. If we. Um, since I, uh, came from design review board and not commissioned, this is now a resolution that we're approving. If we approve it the way it's written, does the applicant then still have the opportunity to work with DPW to look for relief on that? Or are we set in stone on our resolution?
Through the chair. Um, I think that staff here this evening would have a concern with modifying the language of the Department of Public Works without a representative present. I'm not sure when we knew there was a concern with this condition, um, but we, we certainly wouldn't, um, be in a good spot to revise the wording tonight. I, I think, so, it, it, obviously, um, the, the planning commission has two options. We can continue this item to the next meeting, because we will be back for the second meeting in June, and but we can work with the Department of Public Works and the applicant to see if we can come to revise language, or we can take action. It looks like there's an action that's available to the commission tonight. And then the applicant's welcome to speak to public works staff directly. I suspect this is standard language. And I, I, if it's a brand-new curb and gutter, I do not believe that the public works department would just have them do it again for no solid reason. So it's the, the decision is really the, the commission's to make.
Thank you. Comments? Do we want to consider a motion based on the resolution as presented by staff?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the project. Um, do I have to read the resolution and all that?
Through the chair. I think all you would need to do to make the motion is to identify the, you're referring to the draft resolution included in tonight's packet?
Thank you. Um, new to this. Um, okay. I move that we approve the project, um, as presented by staff in the draft resolution. With the condition that the applicant work with staff on the photometrics.
And, and change out the juniper.
And change out the juniper.
Through the chair. It would that be an added condition of approval by the planning commission to revise the landscape plan to replace the juniper plants shown, and to revise the lighting, uh, lumens to be, uh, in compliance with the city of San Rafael's municipal code. As referenced by the planner this evening, that it's basically bright enough to provide secure environments, but it's, it, just to make it a condition that's not an extra-long. Uh, so landscape and lumens were the two modifications that I've heard put forward. Is that, is that accurately capturing?
Yes. Do I have to say all that again?
Nope. No, sir. We will happily capture the, uh, essence of this added condition in the minutes.
As Commissioner Haveman, I'll second the motion.
Great, thank you. Any others before we take a roll call? No? I agree. I think we're good, please.
Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Summers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Chair Makado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Next, we'll go to the director's report, please.
The director could not be here this evening, so standing in is, uh, your planning manager. Nice to see you, gentlemen, this evening. Thank you so much for coming. We will be having a June twenty-fourth meeting as we are sitting here tonight, so I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Um, we only checked for a quorum this evening because we had at least one commissioner contact. It was under the weather, and we wanted to make sure we would hit quorum. Overall, we will be, we will let you know as soon as we know, we, we will be canceling a regular meeting. I suspect we're going to have a lot of meetings coming through. So, uh, that concludes the planning manager's report.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioner Communications. Any updates from the commissioners? None? Okay, thanks. All right, with that, I'll join the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.